Okay, call the meeting to order, we'll get started if you could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the May 2nd, 2019 Town of Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. The first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for Enterprise Park at Calverton, Epcal, to consider an eight lot preliminary subdivision. Mr. Isler?
Isler.
He could, Isler, I'm sorry.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, of the board members of the public. My name is Frank Isler, I'm a member of the firm of Smith, Finkelstein, Lumberg, Isler, and Yakubowski, 456 Griffin Avenue. We are the attorneys for the applicant, the Town of Riverhead Community Development Agency. What we have on the agenda tonight is an application for preliminary approval of an amended subdivision map for the acreage remaining owned by the Community Development Agency at Epcal. We previously had before this board a subdivision application for preliminary approval for a 50-lot subdivision, which was pending before this board. And by letter dated March 13th, 2019, the CDA requested to amend the subdivision map before this board and proceed on the amended map. The amended map is the map we're going to be discussing today. The amended map took the 50-lot subdivision, kept the five lots that were going to be kept by the town, even under the 50-lot subdivision, and I'll identify which those lots are in a second, and basically erased all the remaining lot lines on that 50-lot map, creating instead for the remainder of the acreage, three parcels, six, seven, and eight. The basic reason for this amendment for the subdivision application is that the town has entered into, as I think most of us know, a contract of sale of the area that is now comprised of lots six, seven, and eight on this amended map. The subdivision approval is required so that we can carve out the five town lots that we're retaining. That includes what's lot one on the subdivision map, which is the core Pine Barren preserved area on the very west of the property. And it's, just so you know, that's, was the old lot 48 on the prior map. The second lot is lot two, that's the town park where the ballfields are, that's, was formerly lot 49. Lot three is the Grumman Monument Site and also future site for fire and emergency vehicle storage and operation. That was formerly 21 on the 50-lot map. Lot four is the Sewer District Discharge Parcel, it had previously been 42. And lot five on the amended map is the town community buildings on the south side, they had been formerly lots 45 and 46. These lots have essentially not changed since the original 50-lot map was provided, submitted. As I said, we then erased the remaining lots, the remaining 45 lots that had comprised that 50-lot subdivision, because the approach for marketing and selling this property went from trying to create these 50 lots and market them to selling the entire acreage that remained. And that was what the town board, as the governing body of the CDA, determined to do and resolved to enter into a contract after a qualified and eligible hearing procedure to sell what are now lots six and seven and eight. It really would have been, this subdivision really would have only had one remaining vacant acreage lot but for the fact that Berman Boulevard bisects lots six and seven, creating a property line there, and the bicycle path that runs along the westerly part of the property caused lot eight to be created as a separate lot. But for those two boundary lines that were created by these roads and by the bike path, we really would have been selling just total acreage in one big lot, and the subdivision application we would have before you today would have had six lots. The subdivision basically is just asking you today, what we're asking you today to review and approve, is really the drawing of these lines that create these eight lots. The, in order to sell the parcel, we have to subdivide the property and we need to segregate out the town lots that we're keeping. Now, the, unlike a usual major subdivision that you are normally, frequently dealing with here, this major subdivision has no infrastructure to be addressed. Every one of the eight lots has road frontage, every one of the lots is going to be served by public water through the Riverhead Water District, it's going to be, all the lots will be serviced by the Calverton Sewer District, which, as you may know, is in a process of expanding, we have grant monies to expand the plant, we're going to be relocating the discharge away from Lake Mackay, and it'll be up in what is now going to be lot four of the subdivision, that's the recharge area. So this board really doesn't have to address onsite improvements, because this is not an application involving development of the property. This is really drawing lines on the map for purposes of selling the big parcel and making lots out of the remaining town parcels that are there. Now, the question comes up now is, and we've tabled it before at a prior meeting, is the SEQA review of this application. As you, as we discussed previously, the 50-lot subdivision was part of a major environmental study undertaken by the town, and the town board was acting as lead agency. It was a study that looked at the zoning of the property, the master plan of the town as it affected this property, the existing Epcal revitalization plan that had been in place, and the urban renewal plan that had been in place. And the 50-lot subdivision was created and part of the study, and what the study did was it created a hypothetical development of the property in terms of uses and quantities, analyzed the impacts that would have on all of the normal criteria that you go through for SEQA review, including impacts on traffic, impacts on, impacts on habitat, on endangered species, on water, all the, all the factors that are looked at under the SEQA review. But the study that was done was a supplemental generic environmental impact statement. And I say that and emphasize generic, because normally when you have a subdivision application before a board, the SEQA review is based on that development only, it's a site-specific development of that particular proposal, and you analyze the actual impacts of the development that would be created by those 20 houses that you're looking at, or four or five commercial parcels. Due to the size of this parcel, due to the projected build-out time for this parcel, and prior studies of this parcel, which was also always done in a generic impact way as opposed to a site-specific development way, this study was undertaken on the same basis, it was looking at a hypothetical development over probably 30 to 35 years, it identified a variety of impacts that had to be mitigated. This board was an involved agency in that SEQA review. The DEC was an involved agency as well as the Health Department and the Department of Transportation, and of course, the public and any other interested parties. The result of the environmental review taken by the, through this process, was an adoption of a finding statement. And the finding statement, which was adopted by the lead agency town board here, set forth numerous factors that had to be considered when a site was going to be developed. In fact, where shovels were going to go in the ground, buildings were going to get built, and infrastructure was going to occur, and then ultimately operational issues with traffic and the like. And findings were made, and they were set parameters, and some of the parameters that were set there was they analyzed how much preserved areas were required acreage-wise, they calculated out, based on that, how much acreage was available for development, and they placed in their findings those statistics, those findings. What does this all mean? Well, under the law, when you do a generic impact statement, and you carefully study the possible develop, development of a large area such as this, you have defined in general terms and some very specific terms, impacts that have to be met in future development when actual development is going to occur at the site. It has to meet those requirements and those mitigating measures that are set forth in the findings, and if it doesn't, it has to go back through SEQA review. If a plan is consistent with the SEQA review that had been done, meets all the mitigation measures of the finding statement, then the study's over, because you've already studied the impacts that now have come to a focus with the real development. So, once you do a generic impact statement, the next step for all the agencies that get involved, which is where we are today with the planning board, your responsibility under SEQA now is to look at the actual application that's before you and determine, is it consistent with the finding statement requirements?
Excuse me, whatever that noise is, I don't know if it's someone's phone, but it's a little disturbing, it keeps going off, could you please silence your phones, wherever that's coming from? Thank you.
So going back to the role that we're, we have to address now under SEQA is an examination of this eight-lot subdivision, which is really just putting lines on the, on a map, there's no development being proposed here, and does it meet the criteria of the finding statements? And because it involves no development, there is absolutely no development here, we're selling a big, well, it ends up to be three parcels of large vacant land that will be future developed, and at that time, where an actual site plan or subdivision application is submitted to the town and the other agencies, DEC and the such, then each of the agencies will again have to make the same kind of analysis when confronted with an actual development plan, do those plans meet the requirements and mitigation measures of the finding statement? One of the things, or I should say, one of the agencies that would be involved in that review at that time when there was actual development is the Department of Environmental Conservation. When the 50-lot subdivision was developed, a comprehensive habitat plan was developed that identified areas based on, areas of environmental habitat protection, based on where the other developed lots were located on the site. And that was created as part of the SEQA review there. Now that these lots have been removed from the subdivision, and there's no knowledge at this point until the actual purchaser of this property comes forward and chooses to develop it, there's no indication where development will actually take place on the site now, because there is no plan before anybody that sets that out. We met with the DEC concerning this eight-lot subdivision, and when we were dealing with the 50-lot subdivision, and I was representing the town on that one as well, the DEC took the position that the town had to comply with the regulations regarding creating habitats and protecting habitats for endangered species, because the map that was before the DEC, the 50-lot map, identified the areas where development was going to go, they could then determine, well, the development's going to be up by Route 25, there were grasslands up there, habitats that needed protection, so if you're going to build there, you got to do habitat protection down on, let's say, the southeast corner of the property. That was the rationale for the 50-lot map. We went back and said, well, we're getting rid of the 50 lots, we're just selling raw acreage, we're not developing this property ourselves, and we're going to try to sell it, and we had somebody interested at the time, or I believe it hadn't, yes, it hadn't happened yet that we actually went to contract, and we need to know what to put in our contract with respect to the degree of administrative review we're going to go through with the DEC on this eight-lot subdivision. The DEC advised us that since there was no development planned in, on this eight-lot subdivision, particularly the big lots that are, where the development would go, there's no way of conducting a review at that point of the endangered species protections, the habitats that would be needed. You simply don't know where the environment, where the development is going to go, so you don't know where to protect the environment. So they specifically told us, we do not have to go through that review with this subdivision map, that they're going to accept the SEQA review that occurred on the 50, and they're going to then hold the developer accountable to all the findings that were made in terms of environmental protection, when the developer goes to the DEC to develop. It may very well be, in fact, George Hamworth, who handles this, told us, it may very well be that, well, the developer, whoever it is, well, they may decide to put most of the development in areas where there are no habitat, so we may not have to have as many habitat protection plans or sections and zones being moved around the map. So anyway, the short of this is, I know I'm kind of going long on this point, but the point being is, all you have before you today is a map that calls for no development, but just as being created so that the lot can be sold, all the issues about development will come before you and any other involved agency or approval agency when there's an actual development. So, I apologize for the length of this, but to sum it, you have this eight-lot map before you, you look at it, you go to the finding statement, there's nothing on this map that calls for development, therefore, there's nothing on this map that's inconsistent with the mitigation measures that are called for in the finding statement. And that is why a finding of no further SEQA review for this map is warranted here. And we know we have a resolution that we had submitted that at some point we're going to ask you to act on with respect to that. Let me just look at one other thing. I know that at a prior work session, somebody raised an objection that the public notice for this hearing was, had contained an error, and I just want to address that very, very briefly. I believe the error that was in the notice was that the acreage involved in the subdivision was overstated, and in fact, that hap, that is true, that was in the notice. The overstatement was about 200 acres, instead of being 2,100 acres, which is what our subdivision is approximately involved, it was 23. The case law on this is very clear, that the purpose of a public notice is to give the public a sense of, a good sense of what is the subject matter that's going to be addressed at the hearing. And there's a particular case right on point here where, just like this notice, there was an overstatement of the acreage involved in that case. The court found it was proper sufficient legal notice, because no person could rationally have decided, well, because of this mistake, I'm not going to come to the hearing, because it doesn't concern me anymore. Likewise here, the acreage was overstated, and anyone who was interested in the subdivision would rationally come here, regardless of how many acres were involved, especially where it's a minor percentage variation. So I submit that the legal notice was fine. I'd like to ask the board if you have any questions of me, and then I would sit, and then I, you know, depending on what the public has to say, I return.
There was a question at one of the work sessions about the transfer of density from one site to another?
Yes.
And you spoke about the habitat protection, so I'm having a hard time understanding myself if, you know, understanding as a contract of sale and the town is looking to sell three acres of the eight-lot subdivision, how could one purchase those three acres if they didn't know what the density was going to be, or what the DEC or the SEQA at that time would call for? How do they know what they're going to be able to build there?
I'm sorry, what, the three acres?
The three parcels.
Three parcels. Well, first of all, the finding statement right now set forth that you can develop approximately 600 acres of the entire 1,700-plus acres that we're selling if you accumulate the three lots. That's in the finding statement. The second thing is, if you, particularly if you look at lot eight, lot eight is affected substantially by the thousand-foot radius of, around a tiger salamander pond, which already in our contract, you're precluded from building in that area, that's already a preserved area, regardless of where they choose to develop. So a potential buyer, and it would have to be the same buyer who's buying the other lot, because if in fact, lot eight were bought by a separate, by Mr. A, and lot six was bought by Mr. B, the next-door neighbor, there would be no transfer happening there. It would only happen theoretically with the same owner on both sides of it, not like, you know, unlike your usual transfer development rates on farmland and the like. Secondly, the zoning here factors into this. This is a planned development zone. Unlike the zoning that we're commonly used to, where for example, you have two-acre zoning, and you can only, yeah, so we know on a 20-lot parcel, we can have 10 houses, and we, you know, you can figure that out. With our planned development zone, there are no set standards, with the exception of you have to have a minimum of four acres for a lot, and that's it. And you can design your development under this plan of mixed uses and different sized structures that must comply with the zoning's design standards that are in there, it's a different kind of zoning that most of us are used to. And you can put 100% of your development on lot seven, if you want, and, you know, not use six or eight, you can do part and part, you can do whatever you want as you develop it. And as you come up with that plan, then where the habitat protection is to be located is driven by that plan, so that, like, when we went in with the 50-lot subdivision, the town wanted to put most of the development up along 25, which happened to be a, the DEC regarded to be a significant habitat for the birds that migrate through Epcal. They were not going to deny the town from building there, but the town was then required to create comparable habitat elsewhere on the property. That same kind of scenario would happen under the planned development community, planned development zoning, dependent on where they put the development. That's why George Harmouth, when we met with him, said, we don't know where they're going to put it, so when, if they, if they put it in an area away from Route 25, well, you're going to have that habitat up there, you won't have to do anything with it. So it's a fluid thing, and that's why there's no way to study that here, because we don't know what the plan is and won't know what it is. We're just asking to be able to sell, to create the lot so it can be sold, and then when it goes into development, all of these issues will come to fore and have to be addressed, including compliance with the finding statement and the limitations on development, and if they want to vary those requirements, they would have to then undertake SEQA all over again. I don't know if I answered all your questions on that, Mr. Chairman?
No, yes, I follow you. Just, I have one other question. Assuming that this map, or a map, eventually gets approved, will this board have approval authority for the development that actually takes place?
I think the answer is, it depends on how they wish to develop the property. I believe if they were to come, if they were going to subdivide some of these lots, I think there's still an open question whether this board or the town board would be handling that. I'm not involved with that, so I'm not sure precisely, but I think that there's a view that this would be the, this would be the forum for a subdivision. If it were a site plan, then the town board, I believe under the code, has site plan review of the Epcal property. And, and one other thought I just, I meant to say earlier on, and I'd just like to mention it now, consistent with what we've been talking about, what's really before you tonight is looking at the lots we're creating from a planning point of view, and looking at the lines, and are these reasonable lots, and are they, you know, do they meet your criteria of what's a rational planning lot layout? And that's why I mentioned earlier, this would have all, this large acreage would have all been one lot but for the road going out to 25 and the bike path. So you really would have been looking at one very, very big lot, which is going to be sold and then developed, and the five town parcels. And really, I believe that's the focus of today's hearing, and what's before you, is looking at the lines on this map and determining if it's acceptable as a layout for this property, because you don't have the infrastructure issues that you normally get here in a major subdivision. It really is focused on that, like, where, are you okay with the lines and where they are?
Question I have, we know that there's some issues right now with this contract. So the question I have is, if that contract should not move forward, okay, is this the only way that this would be saleable in your eyes? In other words, this eight-lot subdivision, the way it appears now, or are we trying to tailor this for the current purchaser?
Well, for, I mean, the best answer I can tell, give you for this is, first of all, this map that's before you today is what we're selling under the contract that's in effect as I'm standing here today. And the CDA is moving forward with the subdivision application, because it's a requirement of the contract that we, we can't give title, first of all, without having a subdivision lot created here. I, you know, speculating on what would happen with a contract change, I don't make policy, but there's no reason that I can see why this map couldn't go forward in any event, because it, all it does really is segregates out the town five lots that are always going to be town lots, if you follow me. So we're always going to have the Grumman site, we're always going to have the ballfield and the other sites in the discharge area. So if we go forward with the lot six, seven, and eight subdivision, that's before you, let's say hypothetically, the contract were not to go forward, or they don't close, they breach, whatever happens, you still have the subdivision. Now, if we find that marketing it doesn't work, and we now have to go back to creating lots out of lot six and seven and eight, we'd be back here. But right now, there's no reason not to go, as I can see, going forward with But, right now, there's no reason not to go, as I can see, going forward with this map. Because all we're creating is one big developed area, uh, uh, area to be developed, and if it turns out, if this current contract were not to go forward, was no closing, all we do is still have, now, we've at least created the lots that are involved here. Right now, we have, all the town parcels are part of the same lot as this, and it at least will serve the purpose of carving out the town lots, so they exist. And then what happens with the remainder could be varied, even if we, we have the subdivision in place.
My biggest question is, the minority holder, the 25% holder, Luminati's already stated that he's not, he's, he's not going to probably take part in this contract.
No.
So, now we have the 75% ownership, which, which apparently has the dollars to move forward. If you remember in our work session, I specifically asked you, the runways were part of, of the sale, do you remember my asking you that question?
Yeah, the runways are part of.
You know, so, it, it, it occurs to me, and that's the reason I was asking the question the way I was, is that, all they have to do is really develop this for aviation purposes. So, could they continue with the contract, finish, fulfill, the, the, in other words, give the money to the town, and then turn this into an ongoing airport, for example?
Well, first of all, on that, I can answer that very easily. The contract that we have with them expressly precludes the use of this as a commercial airport. It's a condition of the contract, it'll be a condition of title.
It's commercial, commercial. I'm not saying commercial. I didn't use the word "commercial." But, if I were to entice FedEx or UPS, that's not commercial, those are not regularly scheduled, which I believe is, is the term that's used, regularly scheduled departures and arrivals.
Unfortunately, I don't have the contract with me. I, I'm not sure if it's limited, if the prohibition only applies to commercial, it may apply to a much broader airport use. And, I know it includes not providing service to airplanes, like, mechanical, you know, people coming into land for, you know, being repairs and things like that.
Again, that would be, that would, that would be.
And, I, I must say, I just, I, in all due respect, the, the future use of this property is really not an issue at this hearing, because we're really just looking at the lines on the map. I know there's a curiosity, what happens if this doesn't work, or this doesn't work? But, all we're doing right now is asking for this lot to be created. And, what happens and how it's used, we're going to all have to address as real plans come forward. And, I think they would have a problem with a commercial or a FedEx thing with not only us, but with the DEC and others, because of the impacts, but I, I don't want to judge that. I can't, I can't make that judgment. I'm just pointing it out. But, I, I really think that the focus here is on pre-development, because that's really not before this board at the time, at this time.
And then we're asking, you, you, we're being asked to, to approve something that we may not be involved in, again. You know, and I, I, I get the idea that we don't know what's going to happen, you know, it, it's hypothetical, but.
I mean, the, the, my only best answer I can give you on that, in all candor, is that you're, you have jurisdiction over this, right now, as we're standing here. And, if there were some change in that, you wouldn't have jurisdiction. But, I, you know, I, I can't really answer that question. I mean, you're, you're, you certainly have jurisdiction here to look at this map and, and make your judgments on it. And, if they, if they were to come with a site plan-only development, you would not have review of that. Now, as the law stand, as your town code stands right now, for, as I understand it, that would be the town board. But, you know, right now, we're, we're just focusing on reviewing the subdivision map.
I think I had a question, Frank.
Yes, Joe.
On the, last time we were here, as far as the date that's on the map. The one map that I have is dated March 26th. Is that the most recent? The date is right under the.
Yes, March 26th, 2019. It's, it's, it's the four-page map.
Yeah, right.
Yes, it's, that's the map.
Okay.
And that contained the changes that was, that were requested.
Right.
By the board, with, that, we had discussed.
Do you have it?
No, I have a question for you, but, we have two or three other people on the notice here. Is anybody else addressing it? Frank?
No.
Dick Alloz?
No, you're, you're the only one addressing the board tonight on behalf of the town, or CDA, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'm sure we'll need you to answer other questions, so, don't go too far. Anyone from the public, please, just come up, identify yourself, and ask you questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barbara Blas, I live in Jamesport. My statement is rather detailed. I know you all have a copy of it already, and I hope you had a chance to take a look at it. But, I would, I hope that you might indulge me by allowing me a little extra time to read most of it into the record, as I think a lot of it is important for the public to understand and to hear. We fully understand the significant role this board has in the Epcal process, and I echo the comments formally made by Chairman Carey, that this subdivision has been presented for decision with lightning speed. I also recognize the historical standards of practice and procedure for subdivisions and site plans upheld by this board for decades. Whether for a simple four-lot subdivision, or something much more complex, the planning board has always strictly enforced procedures with attention to detail, and has maintained a verifiable record of deliberations during review. It's in this context that I hope to address the following items, which I believe are relevant to your review of this preliminary map. The legal notice, the status of the contract, the incomplete application of the current seeker record, the prior seeker record and your finding statement, and as the prior seeker record relates to the preliminary subdivision, consequences of actions which may be inconsistent, an intended development plan, bizarre proposed Lot 8, and the legitimacy of a proposed transfer of development. Mr. Isler addressed the legal notice, and the overstatement of the acreage by over 10% or approximately 10%. And, while it may not be legally fatal, I'm just concerned that, in a record like this, accuracy still should matter. This is a significant error. And, I'm just amazed that that would be acceptable to you. If it was an ordinary citizen, I'm, I'm fairly certain you would ask that the notice be The status of the contract. This subdivision is before you pursuant to an agreement of sale between the CDA and the Calverton Aviation, we've heard that. The town is now considering hiring outside counsel to determine whether and to what degree Luminati's own legal and financial problems affect the contract, and the determination of CATS qualified and eligible to proceed to purchase the property. I suggest that it would be prudent to wait until that issue has been resolved, as that legal opinion may render this action moot. I don't know that we would see this same configuration in the future. The application itself. As I foiled the application of the Epcal subdivision file on April 8th, I was immediately informed that since the eight-lot map is but a continuation of the previously reviewed 50-lot map, that I would find neither an amended application nor a planning report. And that was accurate. A lot of the information that Counselor Isler put onto the record this evening, would have been wonderful to read all of that DEC information on paper. I don't, I, my review of the file, I didn't see anything alike that. If those were representations made in some discussion, that it should be memorialized in the record. There is no planning department report on the eight-lot subdivision. It's standard for, practice for planning staff to review any application for the board's benefit, and they do that all the time. Whether it's a major or a minor, or a simple or complex subdivision, you always proceed with your technical advisors and a technical review, and recommendations from the staff. Whatever the public may have learned in another form about the dynamics surrounding this property, it's your planning record that's going to memorialize the rationale behind the subdivision. There is a subli, uh, an application for the, of 50-lot subdivision, signed by former Supervisor Walter in August of 2014. But, as previously, previously mentioned, there is no amended eight-lot subdivision application, signed by the applicant. There's a memo dated March 21st from Mr. Guardiello, the board's consulting engineer. He references review of an eight-lot subdivision map dated October 3rd of 2017, which, I didn't find that map in the file either. But, there is no engineering review of the subject map, the one dated, that, that's before us tonight. There is a copy of the consistency analysis dated April 1st, 2019, which reviews, or indicates review of a map also dated April 1st, 2019. I know Rome wasn't built in a day, and I'm fairly certain that the map and the report could not have all been done on the same day. I don't know if there is an April 1st map, but that consistency analysis is actually part of your seeker record, so one of those dates is inaccurate, and that should be corrected. Your file contains an EAF signed by Supervisor Walter dated May of 2013 for the prior 50-lot subdivision. There's no amended EAF for this application. Mr. Isler, Special Counsel, stated in his March 13th letter to this board, that this amended application is to, quote, "facilitate the sale of the property." By the way, that letter wasn't in the file when I foiled it, and spent two days looking through the file. I heard that during the presentation, and I went back a second time to foil that specific document, and received it at the end of April. According to the seeker, seeker section 617, 4B4, quote, "The application, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of 100 or more contiguous acres of land by state or local agencies constitutes a type 1 action." This is a new action, and it requires additional seeker by the lead agency. Even if you were to continue the fact that this is a, or, or continue this as a prior application, you're continuing it now, the applicant, CDA, should have, at minimum, submitted a revised EAF attached to the original, recirculated to all the involved agencies. The sale of the property was never addressed in the prior seeker review. Authority of the planning board, Attorney Isler presented a map to the board on May, uh, March 21st, on behalf of the CDA, stating that since the board's hearing in January of 2017, the town did enter into an agreement of sale, which requires the property be subdivided into eight lots, as is still illustrated on Exhibit A of the contract, it's actually part of the signed contract. He further stated that the current map is essentially the same map as the prior map, and as he reiterated again this evening, it's just some lines erased to create new larger lots, and the sponsor wants to buy raw vacant land, so there are no proposed improvements shown. The contract also requires that the town file the eight-lot subdivision within a certain period of time. This contract language, in my opinion, usurps the discretionary authority of the, of the planning board. You're being told how many lots, what the configuration is, when to file it, you have your certain period of time, how is this not considered subdivision by contract? Prior seeker record and the planning board's finding statement. Again, as was already mentioned this evening, the property was the subject of extensive seeker review, did the, during the town board's prior actions. There was no eight-lot map analyzed as an alternative scenario in that prior seeker review. There's really no nexus, no connection between these two maps, except the agreement of sale and the prior seeker record. So, let's take a look at the record. According to the seeker consistency analysis prepared by Mr. Seaman dated April 1st, 2019, quote, "The lead agency's findings statement prepared for the 50-lot subdivision must apply equally to the eight-lot map." The consistency analysis recommends that the planning board, quote, "Acknowledge by restating or citing by reference in your finding statement those mitigating measures designed to protect sensitive habitats and species that are articulated in the lead agency's finding statement." The draft finding statement that was part of your agenda a couple of weeks ago, and it was tabled, lacks those references. How do you accept and adopt the consistency analysis and not implement the recommendations? The prior seeker record and the proposed map. Again, according to Mr. Isler, there was no need to show the habitat protected, uh, the habitat protection areas and the covenant and restricted areas that were illustrated on the 50-lot map as a result of the prior seeker review. I strongly disagree with this statement, and it's in direct conflict with the prior seeker record. Sensitive environmental habitats and identified mitigation cannot and shouldn't get erased the way the lot lines can. That's part of the land, it, it is the land, and it should, it should remain on a map. There is a caveat, which appears on page 11 of the final supplemental GEIS, as well as in correspondence, which was referred to from DEC Regional Permit Administrator, Mr. Hamuth. It's restated, and the consistency analysis as well, and it says, I quote, "In the event the proposed subdivision is modified from that contained in the FSGEIS, the town would ensure that such modifications would be equally protective of sensitive environmental features on the Epcal property." Page 23 of the lead agency's finding statement clearly says that of the 2,172 acres, 593 would be available for development, and approximately 1,514 acres would be preserved or protected. And, there is a breakdown of, of what constitutes that protective land, woodlands, grasslands, et cetera. As a condition of the lead agency's finding statement, and to ensure that this modified map is equally protective, because that's what, that the lead agency said it had to be, these conviction, these conditions should be carried over to this map, and they should be carried over onto the final map. Future site plans must avoid or minimize these, impacts to these habitats, that was always the original intent of mitigation. Omitting critical, critical baseline information misrepresents existing conditions. Consequences of inconsistent actions, should you proceed with your finding statement as written, and should you approve the map as drawn without the necessary notations and citations identified as mitigation, your actions will be inconsistent with the seeker record and the lead agency's adopted finding statement. An involved agency, such as the planning board, who, your actions, if your actions are inconsistent with the lead agency's finding statement, that may jeopardize your action entirely. The intended development plan, I'm almost done. The consistency analysis states that the habitat protection areas, the restricted areas, and the covenanted areas were removed from the map because, at this time, quote, "There is no proposed development plan." Ironically, if that was even an acceptable explanation, the consistency analysis would contradict itself, but nonetheless, it's an inaccurate statement. Exhibit B of the signed contract between CAT and the town describes an intended development plan, and it requires CAT to build at least 1 million square feet of aviation-related industrial and commercial space. This proposed development plan should be imposed with the same theoretical building footprints that you did with the prior 50-lot map. You could theoretically impose building footprints on this map. Wouldn't that make more sense if this proposed eight-lot revision is but a continuation of the prior subdivision review process, and also to avoid segmentation under seeker? That seems to make sense. Bizarre Lot 8. Lot 8 is a particularly problematic lot from a planning perspective. This 18-acre flag lot is almost entirely within the WSRR boundaries, and within a wetland habitat buffer area, which was shown on your map, but it got erased. but it got erased on this map. This area is subject to an approved habitat protection plan which was shown on the prior map, but it got erased on this map. The town-owned bike path runs the entire length of the eastern boundary. There's no proposed sewer easement to this lot as is noted on the map for lots 1 through 7. Where and how do you propose to bring sewer to serve Lot 8? These constraints severely restrict the development potential of this lot. Without a yield map and with these development challenges, it's difficult to understand how this board could possibly consider applying development yield of Lot 8 to Lot 6 as your resolution, resolution states and the map indicates. There's absolutely no explanation as to why it's being created other than to fill, fulfill a contractual obligation for an eight-lot subdivision. This is a final point. On the transfer of development. There are several references to the transfer of development from Lot 8 to Lot 6. The agreement of sale uses the words, quote, "may be transferred." Your resolution says, quote, "will possibly be transferred." But the map says "shall be transferred." That's a big difference. There's no section of the town code which provides for a transfer of development within the PD district. There appears, this appears to be yet just another contractual obligation or directive by the applicant usurping your discretionary authority. What are the implications of adopting a map with that definitive statement? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm sure you will agree that this is not a simple eight-lot subdivision of vacant land as has been presented to you or represented to you. In addition to the outstanding unresolved issues, the record and this map lack sufficient and accurate information which must be addressed before you proceed. The problem with applications that move at lightning speed is that they tend to skip the critical details. This application was not ready for prime time. I very much appreciate the courtesy of the extended time afforded me during this hearing and request that the hearing remain open so that the public has an opportunity to further comment and also has adequate time to review any additional information you may provide. Thank you very much for your patience and I thank the audience for their patience as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Phil Barbeto, I live in Jamesport. I operate an organic farm there, but I did have 17 years' experience with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as a licensed professional engineer. I'd just like to point out a few things that I think are really wrong with this application. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and for, for hearing what we have to say here tonight. First of all, the only reason that this matter is before this board is due to the fact that the proposed contract between Riverhead Community Development Agency and Calhoun Aviation and Technology requires the town to file this subdivision map with the county clerk within one year from the end of the due diligence period, which looks like it's going to be May 20th. This map was included within the contract as Exhibit A. So it didn't just appear. This is related to the sale of this property. It was in the contract. Therefore, the application before you is from the CDA in order to, quote, "facilitate the sale of the property", as stated by the CDA's attorney, Mr. Isler, in his letter to you of March 13th, 2019. As a result, this subdivision application is new and is not related to the previous 50-lot subdivision for the following reasons. A, it is required as a condition of sale of the property and will remain, and will, it will not remain under the ownership of the town. So the ownership of this subdivision is going to change as a result of this action. B, there are development plans for this subdivision that will require a new environmental analysis. CAT's economic, economic benefit analysis on page 23 shows a baseline construction of at least 2 million square feet and creation of 2,879 jobs. So there is a development plan. This idea that this is just changing some lines on the map is incorrect. There is a development plan, it's in the contract where this map actually comes from as well. This will require an environmental review of water supply, wastewater disposal, air emissions, traffic and other impacts, as you are well aware. C, some of the lot boundaries are different. For example, Lot number 8 was not part of the 50-lot subdivision and its eastern boundary did not previously exist. As been said already, almost all of this Lot 8 is in a habitat protection area. So the idea that you could transfer yield from something you can't build on in the first place boggles the mind. You can't build on it, so how can you transfer yield from it? The planning board has not yet issued a secret determination or a findings statement, but I submit to you that this proposal must be considered as a type 1 action based on the following legal definitions of type 1 actions. Under state law, Title VI, Chapter VI, Part 617B, 617-4B4, the acquisition, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of 100 or more contiguous acres of land by a state or local agency, type 1. Two, under town law, Chapter 61, Section 61-14A22, any facility, development, or project which is to be directly located in one of the following critical areas. And two of those are freshwater wetlands as defined in Article 24 of the Environmental Conservation Law and also wild scenic and recreational river areas designated in Title 27 of Article 15 of the Environmental Conservation Law. This property has both. Third reason is, under town law, Chapter 61, Section 61-14H, a type 1 is defined as acquisition or sale by a public agency of more than 250 contiguous acres of land. So the reason the map is in front of you is because of the sale, to facilitate the sale, in the words of your attorney. It's in the contract, this map is in the contract. Without this map, the sale doesn't take place. Therefore, under state and town law, this board must find that this proposal is a type 1 action requiring a full environmental review. This is true whether the board is considered as the lead agency or an involved agency. Furthermore, the environmental review is required to be coordinated with all other involved agencies such as the County Department of Health Services, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and, as you know, many others. So I thank you for your patience and I kind of feel bad for you for this ridiculous decision you have to make and this ridiculous proposal that's in front of you. I think common sense will rule the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to address the board? Anyone else from the public? Okay, Mr. Isler, would you like to address some of those points and questions? Isler, I keep doing that, right?
You're not the first one. Yes, I'd like to address some of the points that have been made. The first, I'm not going to do them in particular order and I apologize for that. The complaint that this is part of a contract frankly escapes me a little bit because I'm sure that many, many, many subdivisions that have come before this board contain, were based on a contract that made the approval of the subdivision a condition of the contract. It's a standard practice. Obviously, we cannot convey title to the bulk of the vacant acreage without site plan approval. You need it. And so that is in the contract. Is, I'm going to say, yeah, it's in the contract because it has to be in the contract because we can't sell the property without it being, being formed as a legal lot to be recorded in the county center. So that, I, I respond to that point in that respect. On the sequoia issue, and I don't dispute at all that this is a type 1 action, this subdivision map, but as I tried to make clear my opening statements, we are operating under a generic environmental impact statement. Under the regulations of the Department of Environmental Conservation, once an, a generic environmental impact statement has been performed, and I'm going to be reading from Section 617.10C and D of the regulations, once a GEIS has been conducted, the GE, well, I'll start with the C says, "The GEIS shall set forth conditions and criteria upon which future actions will be undertaken or approved, including for any subsequent SEQA compliance." And then it proceeds to subsection D. When a generic EIS has been filed under this part, one, no further SEQA compliance is required if a subsequent proposed action will be carried out in conformance with the conditions and thresholds established for such actions in the generic EIS or its findings statement. And an action under SEQA can be a type 1 action, it can be an unlisted action. And if it were a type 2, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be talking about it. So under those two actions, if you have a type 1 action or a type 2, I'm sorry, a type 1 action or an unlisted action that follows a generic impact statement review, no further SEQA review has to be done if there's a finding under this regulation that it is being carried out in conformance with the conditions and thresholds established in the GEIS. The GEIS that we have here lays out substantial compliance requirements. They don't apply to this map only because this map is not presenting a development plan to you. The next map that the owner will bring forth will be subject to a consistency analysis on the specific mitigation measures. Where are the, how much habitat is there being protected? How many acres are being grassland? How many acres are being trees and preserved for bird habitat? Those issues can only be determined when the development is placed on the earth, when there's a plan to where it's going to be. The reason why I disagree with Ms. Blas' comments about the current map has to have the defined habitat protection areas designated, those were set for the 50-lot subdivision based on where the development was going to happen on that map. And as I indicated before, the map that gets ultimately, the development that ultimately happens here is going to be subjected to stringent habitat protection requirements by the DEC. But there's no basis to make those determinations today because we don't know where the development is going. Yes, they've made representations and they're required to develop a certain number of square feet of buildings on the site under their intended use plan, but it doesn't say where. So if they put it in the southwest corner of the property, that's going to have an impact that may or may not affect habitat areas and that will drive where habitat protection areas would be placed elsewhere on the property. It's, it's, at this point, we don't know where the development is going to be, so therefore you can't say where the protection's going to go. But there's going to be protection because you have to comply with the terms and the mitigation factors of the GEIS when you go to develop this property. The 50-lot map was a theoretical development of this property and they set these requirements for that theoretical development. We have no development here, we have no infrastructure here. We don't know where the development is going to go. We're creating a vacant lot so that it can be sold and developed by someone else. And when that person goes to develop it, it's going to probably be a type 1 action. It's going to be not separately reviewed, it's going to be reviewed under the GEIS. A determination's going to, determination's going to be made whether or not all of the mitigation measures, the concerns and amount of acreage that needs to be preserved for habitat for the birds and the owls and the salamanders and any other factors and foliages that they identified in the habitat protection plan. It's going to be a new habitat protection plan. There's not going to be no habitat protection plan. It's going to be a stringent new one that the DEI, that the DEC is going to impose on the applicant with the, with a in-place defined development plan. The 50-lot plan said we're going to develop here. That doesn't mean that that's where this purchaser is going to develop. And that's why you can't study that now. And that's why you have to wait until there's an actual development plan. And that's what our consistency report that Mr. Seaman prepared says. You have to meet those requirements, but you gotta wait until there's an actual development plan because it makes no sense right now in a vacuum to decide where and where and how and how much acreage is required to preserve grasslands and other habitats there until you know where they're going to build.
So I understand what you're telling us as far, as far as what's going to happen once proposed development occurs, but the section of law that Mr. Barbeto recited to us, Title VI, the acquisition, 617.4B4, the acquisition, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of 100 or more contiguous acres of land by state or local agency falls under automatic type 1 action. So are you advising us, not advising us, what, is it your position that that is covered under the GEIS? Because, I mean, this to me is a matter of law here, interpretation.
There's no dispute that this is a type 1 action. It's just how do you review a type 1 action when there has been a GEIS in place? Where, where there is none, you'd start from scratch, you do an EIF, you do a determination of significance. You prepare if there is a finding that you need an environmental impact statement, it's prepared and done. The GEIS supersedes that requirement. And with respect to the sale of the property and it being subject to SEQA, which may be part of the question you were asking me, the town board, when they adopted the resolution, finding the purchaser qualified and eligible to go forward with this project, that finding included the approval of the contract to be signed and executed. It did not, the contract did not take effect until that time. In that resolution, finding the qualification of the applicant and directing the sale of the property, they see, a SEQA finding was made by the town board on that sale. And I'll be, I have that resolution here, I'm going to make it part of the record and provide it to you. I mean, it's on the websites and everywhere else, but it's. And that, that, the SEQA finding is the last whereas on the second page, it's in the middle of the page. And the town board found that the sale and the determination of qualification, of qualified and eligible for the applicant was consistent with all the findings in the, the GEIS that it transpired. This, this is a binding resolution on that issue of the review of the sale of the property being studied by SEQA. There was no court challenge brought to it and it's a, any statute to challenge this as long as it's run. So you have a finding under SEQA regarding the sale of the property, if that was the point Mr. Barbeto was really focusing on. Independent of that, so that's been addressed by another board. But here, you know, just to avoid confusion, that this is a type 1 action because of the generic impact statement, you're under those rules of review, not the independent review when you normally have a type 1. The, in terms of some of the complaints about the, the file that you have, I mean, the, the letter application that was submitted to amend set forth all the application that was submitted to amend set forth all the grounds for the amendment. You're dealing with an application that reduced the amount of development in terms of the number of eight, number of lots being created and the fact that there was no infrastructure going to happen here. The reason why Mr. Guardiello did not prepare an engineering report for you, which is typical of your subdivision applications, is because there's nothing to review from an engineering point of view here because there's not gonna be any rows and there're not gonna be any drainage on an interior basis here that are gonna be developed as part of the subdivision. That's why there was no engineering report. Mr. Guardiello did, however, you may recall, review the maps, he made comments on the maps, he asked for suggested changes on the maps. So he did review the maps and that information was before you and corrected. But the absence of an engineering report here is obvious because there's nothing to be engineered.
How, how would the town get sewer to lot number, to serve lot number eight?
We have.
Sewer question, um, each two of us in the process of doing a study of the extension of the district to that boundary. Roman Boulevard is available as a course main location if sewer were ever to be sent to that site, so it does have legal access to the district. And that's, they're doing a report, it's a financial question whether anyone would develop it for any use, for any use. So I, I don't know if that answered the question.
No, that's fine, thank you.
I'm just looking at my notes to see if there's other points I, I intended to respond to. I think in some, on the issues that were raised, I would just again say that this map is just literally putting lines on a map, dividing properties so that they can legally be transferred and the town lots can be legally retained by the town. Whether or not this contract goes forward or not, this is still a subdivision application that the owner of the property, just like a private individual, would have a right to proceed on. And that's what we ask here, that this is really a non-act in many respects in terms of the environment, it's a zero act, and in terms of the development of this property, that's yet to be seen. We're just creating the blank slate of land that will be subject to, I'm sure, plenty of review from every interested agency and involved agency as it goes through the process. Does the board have any other questions than me?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Just come up to the podium and state your name, please, for the record.
Tommy Dalvano from Wayden River. You know, I listened to this, and it's all about dollars. You had Fink on the opposite corner take down that whole woods over there. I live on that other block. The habitat is not what it was when I moved there three and a half years ago. There's no owls. There's no turkeys in my backyard anymore. There's no deer. All right? I seen one male deer and one little herd the whole entire winter. So for him to hypothetically say, or whatever the survey, three years from now, four years now, that's minutia. It's not happening. All right? You have a project, and then you have another project. Finish the first project, then see what the environmental impact is on the first project. Before you proceed and, and give them carte blanche to do whatever they want, the lines are there for me. I would like my house to face the other direction, too. Are you gonna let me move it and turn it like he wants to change the lines? No, you're not. There's more to this. All right? This is a big project, and, and it has to be, you can't even drive out here. Where are the cars going? You just said two thousand eight hundred jobs. Well, that's two thousand eight hundred cars. All right? That, that, then you're gonna have planes flying here, dropping oil, dropping gas. The whole environmental thing is gonna be gone. It's gonna be Queens. Wayden River is gonna be Queens, New York. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just on the point of habitat protection areas, I'm sorry, but they're not determined by development. They're determined by the species who live there and need the protection of our environmental agencies and us. So that's absolutely incorrect. The, and the habitat protection areas that were identified by DEC remain and are required by our own documents to be placed on this map, and they're not. They're missing.
Hi, thank you for your time. Tina Dalvano, I'm from Wayden River, and I just want to concur on some of the things that the other people have stated already. If there's already protected habitats in the first map, the second map, why would you move them so that you could develop something else? If they're protected habitats for salamanders or owls or whatever have you, why would we be moving the habitat to accommodate facilitating building? If it's protected, it's protected, isn't it? It shouldn't be moved. It should be where it is, they shouldn't be able to remain where they are. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public?
Oh, just, just real quick, thank you. James Britt again. On the letter amendment that was referenced as, as explaining the lack of infrastructure and all of that, I just want to point out again, I foiled the subdivision file. I spent two days, first day I looked at only the fifty lot subdivision, went back a second day and asked for the eight lot file, eight lot subdivision file. I don't wanna go into the details of what transpired, but I can tell you that there was very little bit of information in the file. That letter was not in the file, and this was April tenth. That letter was dated March thirteenth, and it was only when I returned to your work session and I watched the tape a second time that I heard that there was a reference to a letter that had been submitted as an amended application, and then I foiled it and Carissa graciously, you know, I electronically foiled it and I received a copy of that letter. So I don't know what was, else was in a, in this file that I never really did get access to adequately. Again, I would love to hear whatever the DEC may have memorialized other than what was clearly stated, not only in the supplemental final impact statement, but in the finding statement itself, there were definitive statements about things having to be on the final map, and we're not talking the theoretical build-out. These habitats exist. You don't erase them the way you erase the lot lines, as I mentioned before. And with respect to everything falling into place with, once you have a generic environmental impact statement that's been adopted, we have a master plan that was subject to a generic environmental impact statement. Taking that logic, it would, it was, it would almost assume that you would never have a type one action and we would never have an EIS, and we know that that's not the case. There are times that, that actions require further review. This case, the GEIS, the supplemental that was done for the EPCAL property, never contemplated a sale of three lots. It, what was studied there, even economically, do we know that the economic return on a three lot subdivision is going to be equal to the, what, what was anticipated in the fifty lot subdivision? We don't know any of that. The economics were based on a fifty lot subdivision. This is totally different. If you're going to go back and say that there are thresholds, we don't even know at this point how this three lot compares to some of those thresholds that were articulated in the EIS as a generic. Having sat on the planning board for many years, I can tell you I've reviewed and looked at many EISs as a result of type one actions, and this is pursuant to a master plan that had been adopted at, as a GEIS, or with a GEIS. So I don't necessarily agree with that statement. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
John McCullough from Rolling Woods, although I'm now told it's Roanoke Landing is our correct description, any rate, not far from here. I, part, one question is of simple logic of just listening to what was being presented by Mr. Isler. When the fifty lot map was drawn, it was drawn for purposes of sale. It was not drawn with anything more, development plans within those fifty lots. Same logic that he's giving, if you haven't, if somebody hasn't bought them, then what do you, or is in negotiation to buy them, how do you know what was to go into those fifty lots or each individual lot? But yet, in the fifty lot map, all of these restrictions were placed. I have to wonder whether something else is going on that in trying to erase lines and to say this will all happen in the future, whether essentially what's being done is to give a blank slate to the proposed purchaser, who, this is not the place to go into the record and the history of the purchaser, but I think it can be said that this whole, the fact that you're dealing with sixteen hundred acres is itself subject to real question. If you try to find out where and when a decision is made to move from six hundred acres for forty million dollars to sixteen hundred acres for forty million dollars, well, you can see in the transcripts or the minutes of the board that it jumps from April to May, but you can't find a decision to do it. And obviously, you can see it in the contract, but whether anyone really looked at the ethical basis for moving, the moral basis, the legal basis, the financial basis for giving away a thousand acres and presenting you with this problem in this way, I can't find that, and I've been following this for a couple of years and have gone back and looked at materials, and I think it's hard to separate that origin from this issue of why things should be on a fifty lot map but not be on the three lot map. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna recommend to the board that we hold this open for an additional ten days for written comment.
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure we get some information from our staff on the questions that were brought up tonight, especially the one about the missing two hundred acres. Missing two hundred acres was brought out in the initial statement by Ms. Blas.
I believe Mr. Isler already answered that question.
The, the, the number that was used in the public notice of twenty-three hundred and some extra acres was by mistake used, I believe, by, when it was created because it was the notice for the original, it was, it was the same notice for the original fifty lot subdivision. And what was done by mistake at that time was, the two hundred acres that were included in that number, Joe, was the two Navy parcels that were really not part of the subdivision. And that was, I think, what caused that two hundred to be included in the notice.
So the twenty-one hundred and seven is the correct number?
Twenty-one is, is correct. And the notice is incorrect, but it's overstated, not understated.
The notice for the, for the hearing.
And so the notice is technically incorrect, but the purpose of the public notice is to give the public clear notice of what's gonna happen at that particular planning board meeting. And no one can say that rationally a person decided not to come here today to hear this public hearing because the acreage was overstated by two hundred acres. It doesn't make sense because you'd be as interested in a twenty-one hundred acre subdivision had it been correctly stated.
Okay.
I'll agree with the chairman's ten day. I agree.
Okay, so we have motion and a second to hold this public hearing open for additional ten days for written comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's held open for ten days. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item for Sprint upgrades at Riverhead Water District.
Uh, you're on, Mr. Chairman, we believe, the applicant, uh, who represented Bating Hollow Cottage condominiums.
Oh, okay.
So, just because that went on, the law is if you do that.
Okay, so we will go to item five under the discussion items for Bating Hollow Cottage Condominiums.
All right, so we have received an application to construct a.
Great.
Yes.
Excuse me, if you're finished with your business, if you could please take it out in the hall, because we have a lot of other business getting through tonight.
All right, so we have received, the planning department's received a site plan application to construct a two hundred and fifty square foot addition onto the western elevation and a hundred and sixty-nine square foot addition to the northern elevation of existing single-family residence, as well as enlarging an existing wooden deck by two hundred and ten square feet. The subject property is located in Bating Hollow Cottage Condominiums off of Oakley Avenue in Bating Hollow. The site is, the specific parcel is presently improved with a one-story, four hundred and thirty-eight square foot cottage with a small deck. The cottage is accessed by a one-way road off of Oakley Avenue, and the condominium site is located within the RA forty zoning use district. The proposed action is a type two action pursuant to SEQA with no further environmental review required. The planning department has received building plans which have been approved by the Bating Hollow Cottage Condominium Board of Managers, and the plans do bear their signatures. On page two and three of the staff report, I just took some pictures of the existing cottage, which is to be expanded. Upon reviewing the files maintained by the Riverhead Building Department on the subject parcel, I did not see any sort of health department approval for the existing sanitary system. During the site visit on page four of the staff report, I did note that there were two concrete covers located in close proximity to the residence. Based on the lack of any verifiable Suffolk County Department of Health Services approvals on the residence, health department approval will be required prior to the issuance of a building permit. I've spoken with the applicant, they can, there's a process where they can go and have an engineer certify an existing sanitary system and water supply to an existing residence, so they've been advised that, to begin that process because it could be somewhat lengthy. In terms of setbacks within the Bating Hollow Cottage Condominium, although it's located within the RA forty zoning use district, the traditional dimensional regulations of the town code cannot be applied to the proposed development as there are not traditional parcels, per se. The proposed additions to the cottage will maintain a sixty-three foot setback from the neighboring residence to the west, and will maintain a forty foot setback to an unoccupied structure to the north, and the proposed deck expansion will maintain a forty-five foot setback from the nearest property line to the east. None of the proposed additions will require any relief from the zoning board appeals. The construction and expansion of the house and deck will require the removal of several trees in the vicinity of the house. The floor plan and elevation drawings do indicate that all runoff from the house will be captured by gutters and piped into subsurface drywells. I just in page, on page five and six of the. Um, I just in page, on page five and six of the report, I detailed the history of why the residential development in the Bating Hollow Cottage is before the planning board, and we're just continuing with the precedence that was set by that 1993 ruling. Um, the referral was not required to Suffolk County Planning Commission as it is a expansion of less than 1,000 square feet with no change in occupancy or use. Um, and I do have a resolution here to schedule a public hearing for the first meeting of, I believe, June. Does the board have any questions?
Quick question, once we got to the sanitary, the decks are gonna be on, it looks like from this one map, on two sides of the property. That, those are not the sides of the, uh, existing wastewater system?
No, so the existing sanitary system is located on the western side of the house. Now, there is a proposed expansion on that western side, uh, and that's gonna be
It doesn't tell me east.
I, I, I know, and I just, we, we didn't have enough and I couldn't scale it up.
Tells me where the deck is, but I don't know where north is.
So the, eh, where you see the number eight, that's
Yeah.
The western side.
Okay.
That's the vicinity where the health, the sanitary system is located.
Okay.
Now, I mean, it's not shown on the plan, but again, this is why I'm, we are gonna recommend health department approval, uh, just to ensure setbacks to structures.
The whole getting at is that tech expansion, it's not gonna go over the existing system.
No, no, it does not appear to.
Gotta leave it exposed.
It does not appear to, but that's something that will be, to be approved by the health department and certified. Beyond that, as we've had a couple of other of these expansions within the condominium, um, we have had public hearings on them. Does the board have any other questions?
And the Bating Hollow Board has already approved it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the, the plans bear the signatures of the Bating Hollow condominium
Okay.
Board of Managers.
Okay, yeah, we'll take up the public hearing under resolutions.
All right.
Greg, is anyone else here? No?
Uh, no, no, we're gonna, I'm gonna run through the cell tower applications.
Okay, number one, uh, sprint upgrades at Riverhead Water District.
All right, so we've, uh, for the sprint upgrades at the Riverhead Water District, uh, these are the improvements at the main office on, at 1035 Pulaski Street. Um, the Riverhead Water District Superintendent has reviewed the plans and signed an owner's endorsement authorizing the proposed work. Um, plans were referred to H2M architects and engineers, and they were signed off by Joseph Manero of H2M on April 11th, 2019.
Stop there?
Yes, sir.
Is that PE?
Uh, yes, sir.
He's a PE?
I believe he is. Uh, site location, as I said, is a 1.4 acre parcel located at 1035 Pulaski Street within the PRC zoning use district. Um, the site is predominantly residential, and there is some industrial buildings across Pulaski Street. Uh, proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. Planning staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency, uh, without the need for coordinated review and issue a negative declaration pursuant to SECR. Uh, the proposed tower work consists of removing antennas and replacing them with new antennas, installing diplexers, uh, running new conduits from a ground mounted equipment pad, and routing six new coax cables up the water tank. Ground level work consists of running new conduits, uh, installing new RRH units, diplexers, and assorted equipment to a new Unistrut rack. Uh, there are no new generators being proposed as part of this application. Uh, we have received an RF analysis report, uh, which analyzed all the carriers on the tower, including AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, as well as the proposed sprint equipment. Uh, the RF exposure levels at the site were found to be 2.136% of the maximum permissible exposure as established by the FCC. Um, now, it was noted during the review that the FCC compliance report is dated February 5th, 2019, while the last revision date for the site plan is February 20th, 2019. Although the MPE levels detailed in the report are well below the FCC maximum levels permitted, um, it's recommended that the applicant submit a supplement report just certifying that the February 20th report is consistent with the February 5th report. Um, we've received a structural analysis report, uh, for the mounts, which was prepared by a New York State licensed professional engineer dated April 9th, 2019, and that found that the existing mounts will, are sufficient to handle the proposed sprint modifications. Um, now, it's noted with this report that they did not, the structural analysis did not analyze the tower or foundations. Being that the weight loading on the tower would be negligible, they're removing some and adding some, um, the increase in weight should not be significant, uh, being that the plans were reviewed by the water district's consulting engineering firm, uh, would the planning board would like to see a tower and foundation analysis, or would they?
Um, I really think it's in our best interest that a PE signs off on the structural integrity of the tank and what's being added to it. Like, to say it's negligible is, I think, is
Did the H, did the H2M report get into any of the structural analysis?
Um, it did not specifically get into that.
I, I know that, uh, the licensed engineer that did the structural analysis really only talked about the supports.
The mounts, yes.
So evidently, so evidently they're gonna take something off that mount, put something else on.
All right, all right, so, um, what we can do then, I have, in the, in the approval resolution for this, um, we can modify it to include that they will provide a structural analysis for the tower and foundations?
Well, it's, I think we should leave it up to them what they're comfortable with, but I would just like it clearly stated that the structure can handle everything that's existing on the tank and what's being proposed structurally, not just the mounts.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to the tower and foundations.
Right.
So we've already, we've already received the mounts, so
If a PE is comfortable signing off on it and stating that with his stamp,
Correct.
I'm fine with it. Whether that requires a full analysis of each leg and the concrete loading and wind and everything else that goes along with that analysis, it's up to the PE.
All right, so we'll just include a condition of approval that a professional engineer will certify the tower and foundations are adequate to handle the proposed loading.
Basically, what did, what did H2M do?
Um, I, I'm not 100% sure of what they're
It seemed to me that they, that they would've done something like that.
I would, I mean, wha- what I get is I get a sign, I get a sign off, um, it was indicated on the owner's endorsement, it had, it bared the signature of the water district superintendent and stated that H2M signed off. In terms of the exact scope of the review, we're not sure what they reviewed, but, you know.
The other question, the FCC emissions report, you, you were gonna follow up for confirmation on something?
Well, yeah, that was, this, this was something that, uh, there was just inconsistencies with the date of preparation. The site plan is dated February 20th, the RF report was dated February 5th.
I would just like to note, or see noted in that report, um, or verification that you're asking for, that this particular site, people work at full time compared to the other sites where they're not manned. So I, I'd like to see acknowledgement that in their emissions report that they understand people work there, um, eight hours a day, five days a week. And their office is very close proximity to the tank, so
Correct. All right. Uh, we'll capture those in the, as conditions of approval prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Just one last thing, I think we should, we should make sure that, um, Joseph Manero is a professional engineer as well.
All right. Move on to the next one? All right, uh, so, this is for sprint upgrades at the Riverhead Water District site at Old Country Road. Uh, again, plans were reviewed and signed off by the super, uh, water district superintendent, and they were reviewed by Joe Sismanero of H2M. Uh, the site is located on the north side of Old Country Road, across the street from the old Walmart Shopping Center. Uh, parcels all around the subject parcel are owned by Suffolk County and are classified as reef forestation areas. Again, it's an unlisted action with planning board recommended to assume lead agency without the need for coordinated review and recommended negative declaration pursuant to SECR. Again, very similar modifications to the tower, removing antennas, replacing with new antennas, uh, installing diplexers and cables up the tank. Um, it is noted that all the tower equipment shall be painted to match the color of the adjacent surfaces to reduce the visual impacts. Um, groundwork consists of running new conduits and cables, uh, change new R, installing new RRH units and diplexes, new racks. Again, with this application, there are no new generators. The RF analysis report that was submitted by the applicant analyzed all carriers, including Sprint, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon Wireless, and found that the worst-case scenario for RF exposure was 2.7% of the MPE levels. Um, again, with this application, we received structural analysis for the mounts, uh, but they did not include anything for the tower and foundations, so again, similar to the previous one, we will include that as a condition of approval. Everything else with this one was good, so we'll just amend the resolution to include the certification of the tower and foundations. Number three, the next one is Sprint at the Riverhead Water District Plant Number Nine. Again, superintendent sign off, they were reviewed by H2M and approved. Uh, this is on a town-owned water tower located within the Great Rock Golf Course, which is accessed via a access road off of Oakwood Drive and Gerald Street. Again, unlisted action, planning board recommended as lead agency with no coordinated review and recommended negative declaration. Same, similar scope of work, removing antennas, replacing eh, with new antennas, installing diplexers and conduits from the ground mounted up the water tank. Uh, groundwork, again, consists of running conduits, new RRH units, diplexers, and associated equipment on new racks. Again, there are no generators or any noise-producing elements. Um, the RF analysis provided by, for this application analyzed all carriers, including AT&amp;T, MetroPCS, T-Mobile, Verizon Wireless, and the Wading River Fire District, and found that the MPE levels were 7.2% of the MPE established by FCC. Um, now, this, again, was a, the preparation of the RF compliance report was September 2018, while the last issued date for the site plan was March 8th, 2019. Um, uh, staff would recommend that a supplement to this RF compliance report details that the findings of the report are consistent with the most recent revision of the site plan. Again, with this application, we received a structural analysis for the mounts, but not for the tower and foundation, so again, that will be, that will be added. We'll amend the resolution to require that as a condition of approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the last application we've got is, uh, T-Mobile at the Riverhead Water District site on Old Country Road, um, different carrier, same site we had just reviewed. Superintendent of the district signed off on it, as well as H2M. Again, unlisted action, planning board lead agency without coordinated review and issue a negative declaration. Um, now, this, the tower mounted equip, the tower mounted work on this consists of installing new antennas, um, installing new radios units, as well as cables. The groundwork consists of running new cables from the, through the existing conduits up the tower. Now, this application that I reviewed, um, there were some inconsistencies that I've requested clarification from the applicant. Um, the RF analysis report that was submitted with this found that the RF levels at the site would be 0.0001% of the MPE levels established by FCC. Um, there were just some huge inconsistencies with other RF levels that I've seen at other sites, and I detailed them, you know, I provided just a list for some reference. Um, I've asked the applicant to submit a new RF analysis report, which either explains how they arrived at that number or gives an accurate number.
And there's no resolution for this?
No, there is no resolution. I'm, I'm holding off until we actually receive that information and I can review it. Um, this applicant submitted a structural analysis report, uh, which actually analyzed the tank itself, however, it did not analyze the mounts, uh, which is something that I've had the applicant say, yes.
It's a bad
So again, with this one, there are, there is no resolution for approval on this one until the applicant clarifies some of the inconsistencies that I've noted.
So you see what's happening here, Greg? Two different carriers proposing additional equipment on the same tank with no structural analysis.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a concern.
All right.
That's it?
That's all I've got.
That's enough, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, minus subdivision of Henry Silverman, um, that is adjourned until June 20th. And also item seven, Fadun Barn, um, is also adjourned. Before we do the resolutions, anyone who wants to address the board on the resolutions? Anyone from the public? Okay, so, again, one and two are holdovers. Silverman is adjourned till the 20th, and Fadun.
I'll move resolution 2019-032 of the Sprint, for the Sprint Riverhead Water District as amended.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution 32 as amended, Sprint at Riverhead Water District, Old Country Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number four on the agenda?
I'll move resolution, uh, 33, Sprint at Riverhead Water District on Pulaski Street as amended. Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution 33, Sprint at Riverhead Water District, Pulaski Street as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll do 34, Sprint at Riverhead Water District, Plant Nine. Just wish from granting minutes straight of site plan approval for a site plan application, modify and perform upgrades to existing wireless communications.
As amended, right?
As amended.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution 34, Sprint at Riverhead Water District, Plant Nine as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move resolution number 35, which sets a public hearing for Mary Ellen Real Estate, Riverhead Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution 35, scheduling a public hearing for Mary Ellen Real Estate, uh, Riverhead Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved. Number seven?
Number 36, Bating Hollow Cottage Condominium, Cottage Number Eight, resolution to schedule a public hearing on a site plan application, construct 248 square feet addition. Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution 36, Cottage Number Eight, Bating Hollow Cottage Condominium, schedule a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved. Any comment from the public on any matter in front of the planning board? Any general public comments? Okay?
Meeting minutes, uh, will we adopt the meeting minutes of April 18th?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of April 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next meeting is, uh, May 16th at 3:00 PM. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to move.
Okay. Thank you, good night.